Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners, December the 2nd meeting. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Wayne Berry if he'd come forward with the implication. Dr. Berry, thank you for being here.
Thank you. A first-century sacred text reminds us that God is love, and all who abide in love abide in God, and God in them. Shall we pray? God of all kindness, all mercy, and all love, God of all people, on the second day of the month in which many religions celebrate life-giving and saving events near and dear to them, we gather to pray for our commissioners, the employees whose work they oversee, the collaborative efforts they facilitate between private industry and public service, and the citizens whom they serve, especially those struggling to make ends meet, to find food, clothing, or shelter. We ask your favor on these supervisors sworn into office today, and those elected to positions of board leadership. Bless those receiving service pins, and inspire those appointed to various of the standing boards for the work ahead. We pray that the commissioners and county workers will carry out their responsibilities in keeping with best practices, in safe and timely manners, and with an etiquette that respects the dignity of all county residents and visitors. We pray that our partners from the private business sector will honor the values of our commissioners and public servants, and we pray that all citizens will respect and obey the laws of our county, which make living in Dare County beneficial and beautiful. Provider and protector of all, we pray for those who build and maintain our roads, those who staff our hospitals and clinics, and those who keep the peace and respond to our As if you do not know, we live in a deeply divided time. The only thing all of us might be able to agree upon is that it does not feel good. More importantly, it does not reflect our best efforts to live in your grace and your love. Source of all peace, be with our religious leaders in a special way. Inspire us not to do anything that will increase hurt or division, and we all know full well what those things are. You, God, do not take sides. You do not have a favorite political party. You do not cherish any one particular candidate more than another. You are a God who seeks to love, save, and serve all people, even those who do not know or believe in you. Increase in our religious and political leaders the qualities of love that Paul spells out in Corinthians: patience, kindness, confidence, humility, approachability, friendliness, service to others. Keep us religious leaders from being tempted to do wrong for the purpose of attaining a particular goal. Lead us to seek and rejoice only in the truth that you are. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Dr. Berry.
Thank you.
May we stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and moral. At this time, I'm going to turn the meeting over to our clerk, to the board, Skylar, and I'll ask the board members if they will... You want us to all step down? Come one at a time as you go.
I'll do one at a time.
Okay.
All right. Good morning, everybody. We're going to do our swearing-in ceremony for our newly-elected and re-elected commissioners. We're going to begin with District 1, and then proceed in numerical order. So first up, we have Carson Creef representing District 1, and holding the Bible for him today will be Kenny Midget.
Where you want me at?
Right there's fine.
Okay.
All right, left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand. Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Carson Creef. Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
So help me God.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Next, we have Michael Burris, also representing District 1, and holding the Bible for him will be his mother, Conchita Burris. All right. Left hand on the Bible, and raise your right hand. Say aye and state your name.
I'm Mike Burris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Robert Bob Woodard, and holding the Bible for him today will be his wife, Linda, son Robbie, and two grandsons, Tyler and Cody.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Bob Woodard.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As county commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Steve House, representing District 3, and Sheriff Doughty is here to hold the Bible for him.
unexpected pleasure. Make sure you're paying attention.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Steve House.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Steve House, representing District 3, and Sheriff Doughty is here to hold the Bible for him.
unexpected pleasure.
Make sure you're paying attention.
Say aye and state your name.
Aye, Steve House.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. All right. And we now have Mary Ellen Balance, representing District 4, and her husband Todd Balance and son Wheeler Balance will be here to hold the Bible for her.
And hopefully I don't cry. It's okay. I know. All right. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Mary Ellen Balance.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain.
That I will support and maintain.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws.
And the Constitution and laws.
Of North Carolina.
Of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith.
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office.
The duties of my office.
As county commissioner.
As county commissioner.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, everybody. Are you going to do a recess?
Pardon?
Are you going to do a recess for pictures?
Yeah. We're going to take like a five-minute recess, so families and members can take some photos. So y'all go down and...
Back to order, and I'll turn it over to our clerk, to the board, once again, Skylar Foley.
All right. Thank you. We are now moving on to the election of the chairman, and please note that in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, no second will be necessary for a motion, and in keeping with parliamentary procedure, it will take four votes to elect a chairman. At this time, are there any nominations for chairman?
I would like to nominate Bob Woodard to remain as our chair.
Okay. I have Commissioner Ross nominating Bob Woodard. Are there any other nominations at this time? Okay. And if... I will now declare nominations closed, and as we do the voting, please keep your hand raised, so I can formally record it. And those in favor of Commissioner Woodard, please raise your hand. Okay. Well, let the record show that there are seven unanimous votes in favor of Commissioner Woodard, and you are now hereby elected as chairman. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, board. I really appreciate your confidence, and I will do my best to live up to your expectations and our citizens' expectations, and very, very pleased and proud to have this honor. The floor is now item three on our agenda, is election of a vice chairman. As our clerk has said, it does not require a second, so the floor is open for nominations for vice chairman.
I nominate Steve House.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to nominate Steve House. Is there any other nominations? Hearing none, then. Those in favor of that motion, please signify by raising your hand. Okay. Motion carries unanimous. Congratulations, Steve. All right. I'll turn it back over to the county manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations, everybody, and welcome. That leads us to item four on our agenda, and that's the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, county manager, and I hope I do not overlook anyone in the audience this morning, but we have with us our chairman of the Dare County School Board, David Twitty. We also have Ron Payne with us this morning. We have Susan Bothwell here this morning with us. We also have some newly-elected school board members in our audience today, and Justin Bateman, Justin's here, Kenny Bright, and Lisa Lloyd is in the audience today. So thank you all for being here this morning. I apologize if I've overlooked any other officials in... Oh, I take that back. Monica Thibodeau's here from Duck, Mayor Pro temp. Monica, thank you for being here.
Brian Harris.
Yeah, Brian Harris. Where's Brian? I knew you should have been coming down here. He... We got... He's got a microphone and hatters, but he chooses to come here for every meeting. Brian, congratulations on your election, soil and water.
Likewise.
Well deserved. And we also have Dean Tolson, our clerk over here with the courts. Dean, pardon?
And Todd.
Yeah, and Todd's back there, too. Sorry, Todd. Thank you all for helping me out. It's hard to catch everybody's face here.
Jeff Prue.
Jeff Prue. Jeff, there's Jeff back there, our district... Pardon?
Sheriff. Sheriff.
Why don't y'all all stand up? Oh, me. Well, sorry if I missed a few of y'all, but thank y'all for being here. First off, I'd like to just congratulate the new board. Now that the elections are over, you know, I want to acknowledge all of those who stood up and ran for office this past year in the county. You know, it takes a lot to do this, and a lot of hard work, and it takes a tremendous amount of commitment to run for office. So I want to, once again, congratulate Mary Ellen, Carson, and Michael for stepping up to the plate, and I certainly look forward to working with you guys on this board. Today, though, I want to take... Let us just celebrate the strength, the diversity, and the unity of our community. Please know that each one of you in this audience today plays, and listening to our board meeting, plays a vital role in making our community vibrant and resilient. Let us take this opportunity to appreciate the contributions and the efforts of every member, and to build on the foundation of mutual respect and support. I believe that we, as a society, must start to look past our differences and begin to honestly work toward focusing on our commonalities. We're all human beings, and our focus must be towards improving the conditions of all human beings, whether as a community member, an educator, a clergy member, a police officer, an elected official, a student, or homemaker. We all have a platform to make our world a better place. Open dialogue will be a key, and being willing to see from one another's perspective will be essential in achieving positive results for our community and our nation moving forward. At this time, I have a special presentation I'd like to make, and I will come down front to do so. of Dare County since 1989. His career spans an impressive 49 years. His service includes time in the Ahoski Police Department, the Duck Police Department, and the Dare County Sheriff's Office. Over the course of his career, he has undertaken a range of roles, including patrol, investigations, narcotics. He served as a school resource officer at First Flight High School, and he rose through the ranks at the Dare County Sheriff's Office as a lieutenant before he retired in 2006. Well, he didn't have enough, folks. Following his retirement, he was elected to sheriff of Dare County in 2010. That was two years before I came on this board, and ever since I've met that gentleman, every year, our friendship continues to grow more and more. I couldn't be honored to call him my friend. I know you figured this out by now. But under Doug Doughty's leadership, he established several initiatives, including Camp Salt, the Dare County Narcotics Task Force, the Joint Agency Tactical Team, collaborating with local police departments, and enhancing public safety. Sheriff Doughty is widely respected and admired, not only for his professional contributions, but also for his personal qualities. His generosity and warmth are evident in his daily interactions with the community. He has always been dedicated to his open invitation to residents to contact him personally, and his thoughtful gestures, such as sending congratulatory cards to honor roll students. He's dedicated to building strong relationships within the community, and he has done so. He has a great working relationship with the clerk's office and dean, and the district attorney's office, which is including the Dare County Justice Center. I wrote a letter on behalf of Doug to the governor, along with several others, and I'd like to read the letter I sent to Governor Cooper. Said, "Dear Governor Cooper, I'm willing to... I'm writing and wholeheartedly endorsing Sheriff Doug Doughty for the prestigious Order of the Longleaf Pine. As chairman of the Dare County Board of Commissioners, I have had the privilege of witnessing Doug's dedication and exceptional leadership over many years. Doug's career in law enforcement spans over four decades, all in this great North Carolina. Twenty-five of those years have been spent here in Dare County. Without a doubt, he has made Dare County better, stronger, and safe through his service and commitment to protecting others. When first elected sheriff, Doug made it clear from day one that he and his deputies would be accessible, and he has held true to this commitment. He publishes his cell phone number and answers every call. According to him, the only time I won't answer the phone myself is if I'm in court or in church, and that's understandable. But if you leave a message, I'll call you back," and he does. He urges citizens to provide feedback, criticism, compliments, and even suggestions for improving services. He is accountable to the citizens, and is evident that he rarely... It is evident that he really cares about the people he serves. Doug has also been an active member in the community. He has served as youth teacher at his church, and coached baseball, basketball, and soccer with the county parks and recs department. Over many years, Doug has committed to keeping Dare County a place where people want to raise their families, where they feel safe, where they want to return to visit each year. I believe his strong character and word and deed truly exemplifies the characteristics of those who have received the Order of the Longleaf Pine before him. Thank you for your recognizing community leaders like Doug in this important way. And this would also not be possible without a lot of help from Senator Haney, who pushed hard to make this happen, for Doug to receive this award. So Doug, if you'd come forward, I'd like to present to you from Roy Cooper, the governor of the state of North Carolina, the Order of the Longleaf Pine.
Thank you. 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 Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Wally Overman, and I live in Skycote Community. I formerly served as Commissioner for District One. I wanted to say the following at the November Board of Commissioners meeting, but as most of you know, I was unavoidably detained due to some health issues and missed that meeting. I want to thank the people of Dare County for allowing me to serve you as Commissioner for the past 11 years. I've given all I have to offer in this endeavor, and it has truly been a highlight and a blessing in my life. I worked hard with my fellow Commissioners to make informed, honest, and impactful decisions that I feel have been to the long-term benefit of Dare County. Some decisions were obvious or even easy at times, while others required careful study, analysis, and debate before arriving at a conclusion. It was fulfilling for me to participate in this process and add my perspectives to the conversation. Considerable efforts were made to ensure that the decisions were proper and correct to the best of our knowledge. Basically, I am proud to have been part of one of the most, if not the most impactful boards in the history of the county. It has been a very rewarding, and as I have said, fulfilling, part of my life. I was blessed to be on boards with some of the best Commissioners who have ever served Dare County. These include Jack Shea, Warren Judge, Virginia Tillot, Jim Tobin, who have all worked hard for their constituents, and every member of the board I just left. Rob Ross, Steve House, Danny Couch, B. Bassnight, and Irvin Bateman, who, under the leadership of Chairman Bob Woodard, for whom I served as Vice Chair for 10 years, made consequential decisions that will be beneficial to Dare County far into the future. While serving, it was great to witness every month the work of our splendid county employees. Dare County has some of the very best, and you got to see them as Employees of the Month and Service Pen recipients. It was also comforting to have the counsel of County Manager, County Attorney Bobby Outen, who I relied upon heavily for his expertise and experience on a myriad of issues. Further, Bobby is recognized as one of the leading managers in the state and is called upon regularly to help guide policy and actions on state committees and commissions. He has also put together a great team of department managers in county administration who work tirelessly every day to make Dare County better. Two of these are sitting at the dais right there, and others in the audience. Dorothy and Dave, Sheila, Hozie, Becky, it was great working with you. I will remain in touch with you through the various boards that I will continue to work on, and I look forward to that. I also want to express my thanks to the previous board for the recognition afforded me for my years of service. I truly appreciate it. So, thank you again for your support through the years. I will never forget it.
Is there any other public comment this morning? Is there any public comment from Buxton? No public comment from Buxton, okay. That takes us to Item 7A with an election update, and the Chairman of the Board of Elections, Skip Saunders, is here for that presentation.
Welcome this morning, Skip.
Thank you. Good morning. Ladies and gentlemen, Chairman Woodard and Commissioners, first of all, I'd like to congratulate you all on your recent election. We wish you the best in your future endeavors to serve the citizens of Dare County. I know you'll do a great job. I wanted to share something with you. Chairman Woodard mentioned commonalities that we all share, even in divided times. I want you all to know that I'm feeling pretty good this morning. I drove from my home in Kitty Hawk all the way here without being caught by one red light. So, I'm feeling really special today. Something we all can appreciate. But I'm here today on behalf of the Dare County Board of Elections to thank you for your significant support of our election staff, our precinct officials, and especially the voters of Dare County. On October 2nd, we attended an election strategy meeting at the Emergency Operations Center. Attending were County Manager Bobby Outen, Emergency Operations Director Drew Pearson, Sheriff Doug, and virtually every county department head. Also attending were our new Director Kelly McPherson, our new Deputy Director Rebecca Mann, and two of our Chief Judges Sandy Marklin and Sarah Barley. What happened in this meeting were focused discussions and cooperation to provide material support, to close security and safety gaps, and most critically, to pass along to those conducting the election that Dare County would stand shoulder to shoulder with us to ensure that this election, this general election would be safe, accurate, and secure, and that's exactly what resulted. I want you all to have our heartfelt thanks for coming together with a single-minded goal of unqualified support. It meant a lot to us involved in the election and to our voters. It was a really big deal. We saw the largest turnout of voters in our county's history. I don't like to engage in hyperbole, but I think it's safe to say that. We had 25,298 Dare County citizens vote of the 34,103 registered voters, about 75%. We certainly can expect heavy turnout for future midterms and general elections, at least in the near future. When you queue in population rise in Dare County, it becomes a heavier load, plus the scrutiny that our board and all the county boards in the state get from the state level is like nothing we've ever seen. It's a good thing, but it's a lot of work, and our staff is up to it. I also would like to publicly commend our election staff and precinct officials for running an election we all can stand behind and be proud of. I'd also like to particularly commend our new Director Kelly McPherson, who saw no obstacles in meeting her obligations and duties, as she put most of this election on her back and carried the whole process, along with the troubleshooting all the way to the finish line. We are so proud to call her our Director and honored to work with her. Most folks are left slack-jawed when they see the work it takes backstage to put on an election. We'd like to personally invite you to stop by and let us give you a look at this in the new year. This is an invitation to all of you. The journey your ballot takes after it's fed into a tabulator, we'd like to take you through that, or what ongoing work occurs in the office, which is breathtaking, especially in the level of minutia, or the training our precinct workers undertake to serve our voters best. It's a sure eye-opener, and it may serve you well in your service as Commissioners. Thank you again for your time and your willingness to serve our county. We really appreciate it. I really appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you, Skip.
Chairman, Item 8 on the agenda is a public hearing. This is for a zoning text amendment to Section 22-27.5, the VC2 Village Commercial. Noah, if you'd come up and just tell the board what's being requested, give a little history of this, and then we'll conduct the public hearing.
Good morning, Noah.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. A zoning text amendment has been submitted for the VC2 Village Commercial zoning district. The VC2 district is a small district found on Collington Island. All of the areas and land zone VC2 were found along the Collington Road corridor. Mr. William Meyer has submitted the request to amend the district to allow for marinas as a special use in that district. Currently, the Dare County zoning ordinance defines a marina as a business established having frontage on navigable waters, which has its principal use provides for hire mooring slips and/or docking facilities for boats, which may also provide accessory services such as boat and related sales, boat repairs, indoor and outdoor storage of boats and marine equipment, setting and moorings, bait and tackle shops, and marine fuel service facilities. Accessory uses include restaurant and food services, retail shops, post offices, and laundry facilities. When you look at the VC2 language as it stands now, all of the uses outside of the docking are currently permitted and in operation in the VC2 district. When you look at the Collington Island area, there's currently not anywhere to launch a boat or dock a boat unless you live in one of the private neighborhoods there. If you don't live in one of those private neighborhoods, you're having to leave and either go out in the bypass and go north to Kitty Hawk or Dock Street in Killerville Hills, or go south to Roanoke Island or Oregon Island to launch a boat. Outside of that, as far as a marina goes, the only marinas that we have are found on Roanoke Island or farther south on Hatteras Island. The service would offer, allowing marinas would offer a service that's not found outside of those areas. When reviewing the text amendment to the land use plan, two policies stood out. The first policy was land use compatibility number nine, found under the commercial development heading, which states that "commercial development should be designated to meet the needs of the Dare County's unincorporated villages and not designed to serve as regional commercial centers." The second policy was water quality number 14, found under the marinas and floating structures heading, which states "marinas developed according to applicable state and federal guidelines are identified as appropriate uses in Dare County due to the large amount of water resources within our jurisdiction." The Dare County Planning Board reviewed this at their November meeting and compared it to the uses currently permitted in the VC2 district and those two policies in the Dare County land use plan, and found the amendment to be consistent with those policies and recommended favorable action on it. And the applicant is here today. If there's any questions of the applicant.
With that said, Mr. Chairman, I'll conduct the public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, now's the time that's been set aside for a public hearing on the issue that's just been described by Noah. If you have public comment this morning, then the rules that I gave a few minutes ago applies. Is anyone here to like to speak to that issue? Still nothing in Buxton, Matt? Okay. Seeing none, then we close the public hearing, and, Mr. Chairman, it's before the board for your approval.
Okay. Does the board have any questions of the applicant?
I have, Noah, can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'm just, I've read through everything, but I just want to make sure I'm familiar with what. So, there's no public access for people to launch a boat on Collington at all right now?
No, ma'am.
So, this would allow for a private, but it would be like a business to be able to offer, so people would pay to be able to launch their boat?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Or dock a boat.
Or dock a boat.
Yes.
And you said they had adjacent property, so is that, are they going to put all one?
I don't believe so. At this point in time, this isn't a site-specific request. It's just a request to amend the language. At a later date, if the amendment was approved, the applicant would have to come back and submit for a special use permit.
Okay. I think I might have one more. Somebody else has a question? I think that's all I have.
We can come back to you if...
Well, and the one section where you, number four, in the Section 22-27.5, under four, it's, marina is defined as Section 22, and then there's partial definition, but that would include being able to do restaurants and all the other stuff too, right?
The associated uses of the definition of marina allow for restaurants and stuff, but internal to that district currently, the current language allows all the associated uses that a marina is defined as.
Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else have any questions of the applicant or of Noah? Okay, in that case, close the public hearing?
Yeah, the public hearing's been closed. It's for your consideration.
All right. Then, what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion to approve the text amendment to Section 22-27-5, VC2 zoning district is recommended by the Dare County Planning Board.
Second?
Need to adopt a statement of consistency to the planning plan as that.
And so, there's a motion on the floor. Commissioner Bateman, did I hear a second from Commissioner Valance? Okay, we have a second. The floor is open for additional comments, if you have any.
I'd just like to say, I think this is really a great thing for that community, and Collington needs it.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. With that being said, those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose likes it? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Noah.
Chairman, Item 9 on the agenda is a quid pro quo judicial hearing for the special use permit 7-2024 submitted by Jimmy and Dana Sumrell. In just a moment, I'll, Noah, again, give you a summary of that. While anybody that's going to speak, the applicant needs to come up and be sworn as well before we can start. While they're doing that, for the new members on the board, a special use permit is a quid pro quo judicial process, and what that means is you are sitting as sort of the judge and the jury. This is not like the normal things where you just do what you think is right or those kind of things. It's not a discretionary thing. This is something where you listen to the facts, and based upon the facts that you hear before you today, you make a decision on whether or not to add additional conditions to a use that's permitted already in that zone. And so, whatever you decide at the end will become the special use permit that governs how the person who owns this property will operate going into the future. With that said, everybody has been sworn, and with that, I turn it back over to you to present the initial evidence.
All right. As stated by the County Manager, Jimmy and Dana Sumrell have submitted a special use permit application to allow for a travel trailer park on their property located in Eastlake. The property is currently identified as two parcels, parcel 017542000 and 01754003 in the Dare County tax records, and is located at 19143 Highway 64 in Eastlake. The property is owned Eastlake Commercial Services, and travel trailer parks are permitted subject to a special use review and the requirements of the Dare County Travel Trailer Park Ordinance referred to in this memo and later on in the draft special use permit as Section 160. Currently, there is a single-family dwelling located on one of the parcels. The applicant will need to submit a recombination plat to isolate and separate the single-family dwelling from the overall parent parcel of the proposed travel trailer park site. Travel Trailer Park Ordinance requires that at least two acres of contiguous land be available. When developing a travel trailer park, the site contains 2.74 acres after the recombination, meeting the requirements of the ordinance. The applicant is proposing to install 22 travel trailer sites. There is a, associated with this, there is a site plan that all should have in front of you that depicts all of the required improvements, including parking spaces, associated bath house. There's a pond denoted on the site plan that will be used for firefighting operations since Eastlake does not have municipal water. Waste water through the site will be handled through four onsite septic systems, three of which are currently in existence on the site due to prior improvements that were located on the property. One new system will need to be installed. The area disturbance on the site will trigger the need for state permits, including state stormwater permit and sedimentation and erosion control. The Dare County Fire Marshal has reviewed and approved the site plan. His comments and conditions have been included in the draft special use permit. Dare County Public Works has reviewed it for proper sighting of required dumpsters. The Dare County Planning Board reviewed it at their November meeting as well and found the site plan and conditions of the draft S U P to be reasonable and appropriate.
Any questions for Noah?
Is this the time to discuss the conditions?
Right now, we're putting all the evidence, so we would ask any questions factually from Noah, and then we'll get the applicant up and see what they have to say, and then we can go from there.
I'll do that then, Dan.
I have one question, Noah. Upon compliance with all the conditions of the proposed S U P, does this project meet all the conditions of the Dare County zoning ordinances?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Gotcha.
Okay. Any other questions for Noah? All right, if the...
I got one question. When the planning board met, did they unanimously approve? Oh, sorry.
So, the planning board doesn't approve special use permits. They just review it as a precursor review and deem it reasonable and appropriate. The changes to 160, changes to the general statute a few years ago preclude the planning board from being able to make a recommendation for you, so there's no bias in the hearing.
Okay. But they are recommending that we do it?
No, there's no recommendation.
It meets, they're just saying it meets everything.
They found that the conditions and the site plan were reasonable and appropriate.
Okay.
So, the way a special use permit works is, they are permitted to do what they do. Your decision is not whether they can or they cannot do what they're asking for. The issue is, are there conditions? Are there things peculiar about this site that require you to put conditions on it to mitigate impacts to adjoining property owners or to the community? So, when the planning board looks at it, they may recommend conditions, and those conditions may be reflected in the proposed permit, but they don't tell you yes or no because you're the finder of fact and you're the final decision-maker. And in this particular case, the statute doesn't allow them to make a recommendation one way or the other.
Thank you. Learning curve.
All right. If the applicant and whoever's here for the applicant would come forward, please. Do you all have any evidence to present beyond what Noah has already presented?
None at all, but I would like to congratulate everybody for the elections and new and old guys, and it's good to see everybody here again. Jimmy's here, as the owner of the property, and we've presented the site plan, we've gone over the S U P with Noah, and thank Noah for all his work. If y'all have any questions about the site plan, let me know.
I do to the applicant, then.
Yeah, I have some questions, not necessarily about the site plan, but just some clarity.
Let me get the facts, let me ask, let me get the facts straight, please. Do you consent to the facts as they were presented by the planning director?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And do you consent to the entry into evidence of the file with all the contents to the board for their review?
Yes.
Okay. And then, do you consent to the terms and the conditions contained in the special use permit?
Yes, yes.
Okay. With that said, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you, County Manager. I just need some clarity, that's all. Part of the conditions say that the travel trailers may be allowed to remain in the park on a year-round basis. However, the units shall not be used as permanent dwellings, and they should be ready for highway use. Then, another, I just need some clarity here. Another condition was the length of occupancy of any travel trailer shall be less than 90 consecutive days. I don't understand, explain that to me. I'm not understanding the difference in the two.
So, throughout Dare County, if you look at a lot of the travel trailer parks, instead of these people towing their camper back and forth for the weekends or the weeks that they come, they rent a site, leave the camper there, it stays there full-time, year-round. The condition is that for that travel trailer to sit in that park, it must be left in a highway-ready state, wheels on, license tagged, ready to go. That way, in the event of a storm or, you know, they leave, it goes with them in an event of evacuation or anything of that effect. The 90, length of occupancy less than 90 consecutive days is to prohibit somebody from setting up a travel trailer park and making it a permanent residence. So, two separate conditions that are found internal to the ordinance.
Okay. My next question then is, they can remain there on a year-round basis. What, at the end of that year, do they sign a, I don't want to say a lease, but another, sign up for another space if they want to keep it there beyond the year? They sign up for another year?
That would be to the operator of the travel trailer park, how his rental agreements are set up. But his rental agreement must have to reflect our conditions.
But I want to know what the applicant's thought process is on that. I guess that would be up to them if they wanted to stay. I understand that, understand that. My question is, will you allow that to sign up for another year?
Can they do multiple years for sure?
Yeah, yes. Now, here's my concern with that. And I do, I've got a travel trailer, and I travel, but I don't stay anywhere any length of time. I've seen places that have done that, and they go on for two or three years, and then the next thing you know, they haven't pulled that trailer out of that spot in three or four years, and it ain't highway-ready. I need to understand that you guys are going to enforce the fact that that trailer is highway-ready no matter when.
Yes, yes. That would be something yearly that they would make sure of.
Yes.
Chairman, there's FEMA requirements that require it to be highway-ready, and it also requires it to be that year or less time so that you can't have a, I'll quote, "permanent" place there. They won't allow you to attach a porch. They won't allow you to attach an outbuilding. They won't allow you to attach anything. They require you to keep the wheels on it. They require you to keep the tongue on it so that you can evacuate if you need to evacuate simply by hooking up and moving out. And that are all things that FEMA would require as well.
All right, well, I understand that.
It's also in the ordinance a requirement that the applicant is responsible, the operator of the travel trailer park, is responsible for ensuring that these travel trailers are kept in that way, and if they're not, and they stay, it's his responsibility to do any type of cleanup or damage repair.
Get it out of there.
Yes, sir. That's a requirement of the ordinance.
And I understand, another condition is, no additional decks, porches, or other pertinent structures, other than 100-square-foot entrance landing, shall be allowed. And I understand that, and I'm fine with it. I've seen, and there are existing to this day in Dare County, pertinent structures on sites. You're telling me that you will not, according to this, allow any pertinent structure, such as a storage shed or anything like that, to be on this site because there are places in Dare County right now that are travel parks that have pertinent structures? So, you're telling me that you will abide by Condition 6, no additions, decks, porches, or other pertinent structures other than the 100-square-foot entrance landing? Is that correct?
Correct.
Let's see what else I have. No staging of equipment or materials along the right-of-way of 64? Understand that. You have three septic sites you're going to use that are already existing, correct?
Correct.
The fourth site, is that for the bath house, the new facility that you're building?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And for additional travel trailer sites.
Right.
That's right.
So, fencing, you said for a buffer, and it said in here that you had a sample of the fencing, but I never saw a sample of that fencing. Is it, what is it going to be, a six-foot privacy fence?
It's in, it's on the site plan on one of the back, the end sheets of the site plan set. There's a typical cross-section of a fence.
All right. I missed it. My apologies. So, what is it? Six-foot?
Six-foot, that's correct.
Okay. Pardon?
Opake, so that you can see through it.
Okay. Great.
And if there is a possibility of using existing vegetation or adding some vegetation, not along the right-of-way, but in other areas, we might try to use some of the existing vegetation that exists. But there's not a lot there, but there is some.
And you'll provide tenants' leaked copy of the leases to our planning, correct?
Absolutely.
What else did I have? One other thing. Has, did the public weigh in on this? Surrounding community, any surrounding homeowners weigh in on this? Are they fully aware of what's going to go on in this?
The property was posted, and the adjoining property owners on both sides of 64 were sent a letter. I have not received any comment from anybody.
Okay. Plus, you advertised it in the Coastal Times, I believe.
No, sir.
Well, something...
It was advertised on the web page.
Web page, okay, excuse me, web page, all right. I think that's all I have for the moment, unless somebody else has something. Commissioner Creef, you have something?
Actually, no, this was advertised, I believe, in the...
Yeah, it was. I saw it. It was $99. It cost you $99. I knew Dad Go Well.
It cost us $99.
I just have a couple of concerns. Obviously, this is going to be right there on US Highway 64, and that is a 55 mile-an-hour speed limit zone, and this is directly off the highway. In Lot Number 12, according to your plan, with your proposed fence, how would one assume how you're going to back a trailer into... how you're going to back a trailer into lot number twelve?
That's, that lot is angled so that you can pull past it and back into it.
Okay. I'm just looking at Dare. And is the road going in, you've got your two incoming and outgoing driveways on both sides, are they going to be wide enough where we don't have people jackknifed out in the middle of sixty-four on a safety?
We'll have N C D O T regs for any kind of right-of-way width for any kind of turning radiuses. We're going to meet all that.
Okay.
And we'll have a D O T driveway permit that we'll present to Noah and his staff.
She said, that's a major concern for me, safety right there because that's a single-lane road and if one of those trailers gets backed up and jacked up in the middle of the road, you could have issues.
But we left the travel trailer park sites further back on the property. We put the septic systems between the sites and the right-of-way so we could get the distance so that we wouldn't have a stacking problem. Hopefully, we won't have to have deceleration lanes and things like that to add, or acceleration lanes leaving. But again, that will be something that D O T and I will discuss and make sure that permit's in place.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
That all, Commissioner?
Nope, I got one.
All right.
How are, is it going to be in the lease, how you monitor the ninety days? Do you have a plan for how you're going to make sure someone's not there for longer than ninety days? And that'll be included in your lease?
We'll have lease agreements with them, yes.
And I didn't see anything in this, but are you, will they, will the people that are putting their trailers there be allowed to do a V R B O?
No.
And that will be included in the lease?
Yes.
That V R B O is not allowed?
This is mostly set up for the bridge people coming in. They have nowhere to go and there's approximately about seventy-five of them that need places to put, they come in, a lot of them have their own fifth wheels. And that was kind of what we were trying to do and whatever. I'm not really.
They're going to be there for more than ninety days.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're going to be here more than ninety.
More like five.
Yeah, but they would just have to pull out and come back in.
Three to five years on the Alligator River Bridge.
A lot of them, a lot of times during like the holidays, they'll pull their stuff back out and come back.
They could pull it out and bring it back in each week if they wanted to.
They don't have to, the camper can stay. They just can't stay for ninety days.
Yeah, they can't. The campers can stay.
They would have to vacate for the property for a period of twenty-four hours.
There, it is a concern of the V R B O. I'm not going to lie because it's so much already. But if you put that, include that in the lease, that it can't be used for that.
Subletting or.
Subletting, yes.
You could make that a part of the condition.
Could you?
Y'all consent to that condition?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
I'm good with it.
Request that as part of the condition.
I would like to request that as part of the condition.
So add no subleasing?
No subleasing.
Yeah, I'm good with it. Anything else?
Okay. Commissioner Burris had something.
I would just like to state that if you're going to do something like this, I know in my hometown of Wanchies, there was some trepidation when Malcolm Ferring put one in right there north of the store as you first enter Wanchies. I don't know how familiar you guys are with that. It has been excellently cared for, taken care of. He used natural shrubbery out there on the roads. It stays trimmed. He keeps a nice, nice place down there. I would advise you go down, take a look at that and then, and maybe use that as part of a footprint for what you, you know, want to do as far as how you take care of your property and keep things maintained.
We, that's why I mentioned possible, possible use of some of the natural vegetation and adding some as well.
Yeah, and I think, I like.
But just a fenced-in area.
I like the thought of the natural vegetation a lot more than a fenced-in area if it can be. You know, I think anything.
We talked about that and he's actually been on-site and I have too. We did Marshy Ridge, the Beasley property in Collington, I did that one as well. It's a well-kept site, too. But, well, I understand and we will do that.
Commissioner Bateman?
Are you going to have in a contract where they know that if a storm comes, they're going to pull it out?
That's one hundred percent. If there's an evacuation notice, they have to take their trailer and move. That's, that's part of any travel trailer park, I'm pretty sure. They have to have it road-ready in case of an evacuation, I think. I'm pretty sure that that's part of the ordinance.
It's in the ordinance and if they.
It's in the ordinance, but I think they need to have it in the contract.
It's in the lease agreement.
Their responsibility, we have a hurricane come, they need to get the trailer out there then.
That's exactly. That will be in the lease agreement.
I like Mike's idea. I would love to see some Russian olives across there instead of a fence.
I like the idea, too.
Yeah. I mean, it would look a lot better and pleasing from the public eye.
If you guys don't mind us doing that, it gets to right-of-way, we'll meet the buffer requirements and try to do as much as we can.
Right. And you do not see at any time in the future, somebody coming by and just pulling the trailer in, hooking up for a night?
What, now?
No.
Anytime.
You envision nightly rentals.
Yeah.
No, not really.
So you're really, you're really going for a long-term rental?
Yes, I want it for the bridge is what I'm shooting for.
Okay. That was nowhere in the, in what we received, that it was for the bridge, so we didn't know.
And to condition seventeen, if you look, it requires them to have a storm-ready evacuation plan. They provide that, too.
I just want to make sure that the customer knows that and if it's in their contract, there's no question.
Got you.
Okay. Commissioner, Vice Chairman House?
Yeah. Talking about the evacuation order. Once an evacuation order is put out, you have very limited time to get somebody to come in to pull anything out.
Right.
How are you going to notify these people that they need to get the trailer out? And the timeframe they need to do that on?
Well, I have their addresses and all, everything I need already. And if we see it coming, we'll just notify them.
Okay.
You would do it via telephone and email, whatever?
Whatever it takes, yeah. Most of them would be right here.
Got you.
I got you.
He's got some incentives to do that as well because he's going to be responsible for the cleanup if he does it.
Yeah. Yes, sir.
He doesn't want a mess.
Yeah. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, one more.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. And I'm looking back at this. It says that on seventeen, the park owner shall develop a storm response plan of appropriate actions, but it doesn't say anything about them submitting that to you. Wouldn't you want to see what their storm plan is, that you make sure that their storm plan is, oh, I'm going to call my buddy to go get my trailer? Wouldn't you want to see that response plan and know that it was attainable? I'm just looking out for you.
Yeah, there'll be a way, I mean, via email, via phone, via contact to get somebody down here to, if there's nobody in the trailer.
Right. But in your, under seventeen, it says the park owner shall develop a storm response plan of appropriate action, but it has nothing that he's going to have, put his eyes on it. If I were him and I'm renting that space, I want to see that this plan is not a baloney plan and that it actually makes sense. So wouldn't you want to protect yourself to make sure that you see the plan that they're going to, and how they're going to do it?
Would develop something like that. Yes, ma'am.
He's the one developing the plan.
Yeah, he's the owner and.
It's the park owner who's developing the plan, not, not the tenant.
Oh, I'm thinking the tenants. Okay. Well, I would have your tenants do that, too.
He'd hook it up and.
That's why I said, put it in the contract.
Sure, sure. In the lease agreement, yes, ma'am.
So, let me, just to make sure we're all on the same page and get the consent of the owner. What I've got is we're going to add a provision that says no subleases. We're going to add a provision that requires the evacuation in a lease and we're going to require the use of natural vegetation rather than the fence. Is that what we said?
As possible, as much as possible.
The section of the ordinance allows for an alternating between the buffer requirements. You can use vegetation and/or fencing.
And we're going to say we're going to use vegetation where it's possible.
I would like to do what you were saying. I own a subdivision over in Columbia and we did a berm and did Russian olives and it's a big twenty-foot, thirty-foot high, good, nice berm. That's what I'd like to really do.
That's what I'd like to see.
Yeah.
On that more than the fence.
The board's flexible there.
Do you consent to those conditions I just raised?
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else have anything else?
Good.
All right.
Thanks for.
What's the pleasure of the board?
Motion to approve the draft of the S U P, the site plan with the added conditions. I move the special permit, special use permit seven dash two zero two seven and the associated site plan for Jimmy and Dana Somerell for the development of the travel park be approved.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries you now, but thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate your patience.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate you working with us.
Smidled two lands.
Item ten on the agenda, Lee Nettles is here with the Dare County Tourism Board to request consent expended from the restricted lot item forty-nine ninety-nine Tourism Grant Impact Fund.
Good morning, Lee and Monica. Thank you all for being here.
Good morning. Good morning, thank you. I'm Monica Thibodeau, the Chair of the Dare County Tourism Board. Just wanted to say congratulations to our newly seated board and I wish you the best. Congratulations to you, Chairman Woodard and Vice Chair House. I'm looking forward to working with everybody in this capacity. And Lee Nettles is here to talk about our tourism impact grants that the board unanimously approved and now sits before your approval as well. Thank you.
Good morning, Lee.
Good morning, everybody. I was wondering the same thing about Verbo, so you kind of read my mind on that. Let's see. So it's my pleasure to be before you today to talk about the tourism impact grants. We make recommendations on these once annually. We receive the applications from folks. In order to be eligible for a TIG, a Tourism Impact Grant, you either have to be a Dare County governmental entity or a Dare County nonprofit. This comes out of our restricted fund. It's twenty-five percent of the money that we receive and the restricted fund has some certain laws that go along with it. So it's all developed through legislation. It's for a program or service needed due to the impact of tourism. Over the years, we've reinvested more than twenty-four million, made more than seven-hundred-and-fifty awards to a hundred-and-fifty recipients through this as well as the event grant program. Because of the legislation, before any money can be given to a recipient, we first must request the consent of the Dare County Commissioners. All applications, just for the benefit of the new board members, all applications before they come before you are reviewed by the Visitors Bureau's Grant Administrator and Steering Committee. Our Executive Committee reviews them, makes their recommendations to the full board. The full board reviews the applications as well, the recommendations. And then we, as Chair Thibodeau mentioned, that vote was taken on November twenty-first, unanimous by the full Tourism Board. Each of the grants are paid on a reimbursement basis so that we have the proof of the expenditures being made in the way that they were proposed in the applications. And we also have guideline programs to ensure that these dollars are expended in the best use for the public. It is a tiered match program so that a smaller request, less than fifty thousand, require no match. Fifty, fifty thousand to a hundred-and-twenty-five require that the applicant match with at least twenty-five percent and then over a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, the applicants expected to bring a fifty percent match to that. The applications that we have are as follows. Avon Property Owners Association, they requested for three boardwalk replacement projects. One of those was determined by the Steering Committee of the Tourism Board to not have the full public accessibility. So only two were proposed or recommended by the board and that amount is fifty-four thousand. Chick McComico Historical Association came to us with an application to replace, replace the western facade of the eighteen-seventy-four Life Saving Station. That dollar amount is a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand. Dare County Arts Council, they are preparing to celebrate their fiftieth anniversary on the Outer Banks. Because of the guidelines, the Tourism Board didn't feel that quite a few of the expenditures were most appropriate under the Tourism Impact Grant Program, but maybe perhaps better under the Event Grant Program. So we'll work with them on that. Of their proposal, the Tourism Board recommends funding four thousand for some portable panel displays. Friends of Jockeys Ridge came before us or made an application for points of interest trail markers, ten trail markers that would go around the perimeter of the property with interpretive signage to get folks around. Fifty thousand was the amount recommended there. The town of Kill Devil Hills had a sidewalk project, West Martin and Swan Street sidewalks, the amount of two-hundred-and-forty thousand. Town of Kitty Hawk, we had a couple of applications from Kitty Hawk this time around. The first was for a message board, a portable solar-powered, full-matrix message board, twenty-seven thousand, four-hundred-and-ninety dollars. Also in the town of Kitty Hawk on Beach Road, they're proposing some lighted crosswalks, solar-powered there as well, forty thousand. Town of Manio, they had a proposal for cartwright improvements to stabilize a historic eighteen-sixty-five chapel ruins of the first A M E Zion Church and then also providing some updated amenities and adding some amenities out there, picnic shelter, replace the restrooms. Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand was the amount, is the amount recommended by the Tourism Board. Town of Knaxhead had three different applications that they put forward this time around. A couple of sidewalk projects, West Bay Meadow Drive sidewalk, the amount was fifty-three thousand, one-thirty-seven. And then the second sidewalk project was on West Jammer or Wind Jammer, excuse me. The amount, a hundred-and-twenty-four thousand, oh-eighty-seven. And then also part of a larger living shoreline project, restoration. This would go behind the event site basically in the Harvey Soundside access there. The amount recommended is one-hundred thousand. And then finally, the town of Southern Shores, a N C twelve multi-use path, replacing some existing path, moving it from asphalt to concrete for, as you can see, quite a few of these are infrastructure-related and/or safety-related. The total amount that is before you today is one million, one-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, two forty-seven and sixty-seven cents. We really ought to add to the guidelines that you either have to round up to the nearest dollar or round down, but sixty-seven cents is that final amount. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are y'all rounding, rounding out like a lot of these retail stores? The difference is donated to.
We don't have that currently.
Do I?
Not currently.
I don't have any questions, but I'm just curious. Commissioner Ross, do you remember our funds that we set aside for Friends of Jockeys Ridge, what that money was going to be used for?
Yes, it's mostly going to be used behind either entertainment, there's a drone show being scheduled, as well as some additional work on, they're going to have to hire traffic control and reimburse law enforcement. So this is a different, permanent, established project that will go around the ridge.
There'll be permanent markers, right?
Yeah, there'll be forever. Yeah, they're very impressive. Thank you, Lee.
Yep. Thank you all. They are trying to coincide the introduction of the, of those interpretive signs while we have higher visitation out there for the fiftieth, but they are separate.
I'm a challenger now, Lee. Another one-point-one million in my last twelve years. I knew it's exceeding ten million, probably exceeding fifteen, twenty million now, right?
Yes, sir. Well, we add them up between the event grants and the tourism impact grants and we're, we're over twenty-four million now.
Wow, that's incredible. Yeah. That's phenomenal. Take it, take advantage of those tourism dollars.
It is one way that we're able to show some extra benefit beyond just the jobs and the big numbers and the spending. It's, it's nice to be able to direct these back and as I mentioned, the only groups that are eligible to receive these grants are Dare County nonprofit organizations and Dare County governmental entities.
Fantastic. Anyone else have any questions, Lee?
I got one.
All right.
On the Friends of Jockeys Ridge one, we're not required to match on that one, so I'm assuming the Tourism Bureau's not matching anything on that fifty thousand dollar.
Yeah, so you're right. We set it up as a tiered match program on these dollars just to kind of stretch the, stretch the dollars more and so that zero to fifty requires no match. You're right.
It's seventy-five thousand dollars to construct ten signs.
I have a question about the same project. We're talking about $50,000, 10 signs for informational purposes, directing people to certain areas of the park, and what goes on...
No, they're not directional. They're informational about the evolution of the park, the standard of the park, the sand.
History.
The history, yes. Ecological aspects.
Good-sized signs.
Yeah, they're interpretive. They, part of the program or service needed due to the impact of tourism was just the short staff that they have out there, the size of the 470 acres of the park. So the signs allow people to have self-led tours.
Yeah, of course. Yeah. Just, you know, I want to make sure we're not getting 10 signs of this big, 50 grand, you know, it's just an oversight. I want to make sure we're getting something that's substantial and is going to...
Pretty surely, we'll...
Hold up long-term.
Utilize efficient methods in employing and deploying signs.
Probably something similar to Wright Memorials. They have them all over the Wright Memorial. They're informational, they're...
And then with the, any of the solar panel projects, are we going to have backup panels ready in case? Because I know a lot of times with newer technology moving into things, solar panel, you know, a lot of times they can short out, you can have a problem with one, it's quicker just to replace. Because those are safety concerns where we're lighting part of the, you know, crosswalk and roadway, and making sure maybe there's a hardwire backup to...
I don't remember hardwiring being a part of either the crosswalk solar lights or the message board, but it...
Maybe something we could look into.
Yeah, I believe these are portable. These are portable.
Portable, okay.
Well, the message board is portable. The crosswalks, I'm not so sure about. They were setting them up on Highway 12. It's mighty dark on Highway 12.
Wouldn't that also make it the responsibility of the town of Axhead or NCBOT, and not us?
Yeah, these came to us from, and that's worth pointing out, too, that we don't make any grants just proactively. We wait to see what applications are received. So yes, that would be, the municipalities are both well-familiar with their safety needs and concerns out there and how to best address.
Okay.
Sure.
All right, anyone else have any questions, Lee? Then I'll ask for the pleasure of the Board.
Make a motion to exempt for the expenditures of 1.159, 247, make it 248 to round it up from the DCTB Restricted Fund, line item 4999.
Second.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chair, House, and a second by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Lee.
Thank you.
Great projects.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Chairman, that brings us to item 11. As you know, this year, we're in a revaluation year. At the last meeting, we presented to you the Schedule, Standard Rules for Real Property Appraisal Evaluations. You got those. We had a public hearing, and now they're before you for adoption. Hosey, our tax assessor, is here to answer any questions you have. And upon answering your questions, then it's for your action to adopt.
Good morning.
Good morning, Hosey.
Congratulations, everyone. Yeah, I'm here requesting the Board pass a motion to adopt our 2025 Schedule Value Standards and Rules for our 25 reappraisal.
Hosey, just because we have some new members...
Yes.
Can you give like a two-minute or one-minute summary of this is what this is or what it means?
Yes. This is a lengthy document. This is it right here. It's some 200 pages. And the statutes require tax administrators, tax offices to present the methodology utilized in our reappraisal prior to its effective date, which is January 1 of 2025. So we start the process, we present the schedule, standards and rules, which is basically a roadmap of how we do this, and how we arrive at the assessed valuations for all properties in Dare County. So it's not a list of the valuations in Dare County, because we haven't completed our work yet, because it's not January 1. So the law requires the presenting of the schedule, a public hearing, which was held in November, the schedules were presented in October 7th meeting, I believe, and then the public hearing was held in November. You can't adopt, it has to, you have to wait at least seven days from the public hearing before the Board can adopt the schedule. So that is what's before you today. Once the schedule is adopted, that triggers a series of statutorily required advertisements in the newspaper that the schedules have been adopted. And if a taxpayer accepts to that order of adoption, then they can appeal the Schedule of Values to the Property Tax Commission in Raleigh. So it's not an end-all, be-all, but basically it just says, okay, we have your schedules, and this is what we'd use to appraise property in Dare County for this reappraisal.
Yeah, Hosey, the gist of the schedules is instead of having an individual tax assessor visit thousands and thousands of individual homes, you use this methodology. And that's, I'm looking for just that little brief, this is how we assess a large number of properties.
Right, it's mass appraisal. It's not single-family appraisal. But we do, in a sense, visit every property, not necessarily from the street, but we do look at each parcel, whether exempt, taxable, what have you, vacant, improved. We look at all of them, so.
Hosey, the process you use is statutorily mandated as well, right?
That is correct, yes. We use acceptable appraisal principles by the Appraisal Foundation, so.
Thanks, Hosey.
Anytime. I'll be happy to answer any other questions.
Any other questions, Hosey? All right.
So I would request a motion to accept the 2025 Schedule Value Standards and Rules for Real Property Appraisal for True Value, which is market value, and also Present Use Value, and that could be done in one motion.
Make a motion. We adopt 2025 Schedule Standards and Rules for Real Property Appraisal for True Value and Present Use Value.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman, and it's a second by the Vice Chair, House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Hosey.
Y'all have a great day.
Item 12 on our agenda is the Dare County Early College Capital Project Ordinance and Preconstruction Fee Contract, and Dustin's here for that presentation.
Good morning, Dustin.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the Board. I'll be presenting items 12 and 13. They're both very similar in nature. In each item, I'm going to be asking you to approve a capital project ordinance first, and then the corresponding contract second. For item 12, we've got the capital project ordinance for the Dare County Early College. This capital project ordinance is for the pre-construction fee by Barnhill, who was our construction manager at risk. The capital project ordinance is increasing both the Early College CM@Risk Construction Manager at Risk line item by 110,633 and the Series 2025B Limited Obligation Bonds. The pre-construction fee is also 110,633. So I would ask you all to approve the capital project ordinance first, then the design contract fee.
Again, for the new Commissioners, the capital project ordinance, in order for us to spend money, you have to get it into the budget, and this ordinance takes money and authorizes us to spend it. So when you adopt this ordinance, you're saying for this project, we're allowed to spend this much money to do the things that Dustin described. And as we go further, we'll come back to you to amend the capital project ordinance for the construction cost of the building or whatever other expenses occur. So you'll hear this over and over as we work through these projects.
I am so excited that I got to be a part of this on the school board, and I'm going to make the motion that we approve the capital project ordinance first, then the County Manager to sign the pre-construction contract on this end.
Great, thank you.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Balance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Chairman, House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of that motion, then, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
This is a huge victory for our kids.
Looking forward to it.
And our schools.
And then item 13. Sure. The next item, similar to the Early College, the Dare County Sheriff CID Building. I'd ask that you approve the capital project ordinance first, and then the design contract second. This capital project ordinance is increasing the design line item by 181,818, as well as the Series 2025A Limited Obligation Bonds. The design contract is also in the amount of 181,818.
Make a motion to approve the capital project ordinance, and also authorize the County Manager to sign the design contract.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Vice Chairman, House. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Commissioner Creep. Creep, excuse me. Those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you all very much.
Chairman, with regard to that project, that project was originally contemplated to go over adjacent to the jail where the Sally Port is on the jail.
Right.
And in the last few weeks, I've had some conversations with our Public Works Director. The area across the street from Public Works where the old, where the gas station, the gas places there, and then right beside that is where we used to house the pilots for the helicopter. That structures are going to come down, and there was some discussion, and I haven't discussed this with the Sheriff, of would it make more sense to put the CID building on that site so that it doesn't take up space on the jail site that, who knows, one day we may need to expand the jail, and we still have that option. If we put this there, then we've used up all the available space on the jail site. So with your permission, I'm going to ask the architects to look at that site as well.
Yeah, there's no reason to be contiguous with the jail.
Well, the idea was if you did it where the Sally Port is, you maybe could save some money because you didn't have to build as many walls if it was doing it. But I think, again, it then stamies you in the long, if we ever had to add something to the jail, we would have nowhere to add it, because we would have taken up all the space on that site. And that other site on the other side of the road, we don't have a use for now anyway. It's going to be vacant. And so if we could put a standalone there and it met the Sheriff's needs, it came within budget and all that, then it would give us more flexibility down the road.
So it's not critical that they have next-door access?
I don't think so. Well, I'm pretty sure it's not, because they don't have it now. They have, they do it in a different building plan.
For years, like, they were at the old sixth-grade wing of the old middle school up here.
Right.
You know, they didn't have the best facilities there. I think this is a wonderful thing, if they can have a new facility, and then, like you're suggesting, it adds room for expansion as we grow as a county.
If there's a reason we can't do that, or if it busts the budget for that, then we'll have to rethink it, but I at least want to look at it.
Yeah, makes sense.
I haven't talked to you all about it yet, so.
Yeah, all right. Okay. Is, I'm assuming to make it a motion in the second, okay with that?
I don't, I just needed consensus for that.
Oh, okay.
I just wanted to be sure I was headed in the right direction.
Got it, okay.
That brings us to item 14. That's the schedule of meetings for 2025. If you all have had a chance to look at that, if everybody's satisfied with it, we need a motion to approve it. If there's anyone that would like to amend it, then say so now.
Just a question. We've got a meeting on the 14th of July, and then it's just a couple of weeks later, one, two, three weeks to August 4th. Would we be, maybe want to space it one more week to August 11th? Kind of just asking a question. Looks like we've got two pretty close there in the summer. We can certainly do it, just it looked like it might space out a little better.
July 7th, and then...
Two things. One is, we try to keep the meeting short in the summer. The schedule we have ensures a short meeting almost, because you don't have time.
Fair enough.
The second thing is trying to keep it on the first Monday routine works better for the public to know what we're doing and when we're doing it, and when we start getting out of sync. I mean, really, that's the only, that July meeting is only done there to avoid the 4th of July, so every other one's tried to keep it on sync on the first Monday.
Fair enough, okay.
The 4th of July is the week before. Well, I guess it's Friday, sorry.
So anyway, that's for whatever that's worth.
So do we have a motion to approve?
One quick question, last one on September. Is Labor Day the 1st of September? And then our meeting would be the 2nd? Okay.
Yep. I'm sorry, was that you, Michael?
Commissioner Bateman.
Bateman, okay. Did you make the motion?
Yeah.
It's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman, seconded by Commissioner Burris. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Item 15 on our agenda is the McGuire Woods Consulting Contract. For a number of years, we've had McGuire Woods in Raleigh for us as our consultants. They've done, or they do, two things for us. One is when we need an advocate in the legislature, they're our advocate, they're there for us for legislation and things. Almost maybe more importantly, is they review every piece of the thousands of legislation things that get filed each year and review it for impacts on Dare County. And if they see anything filed buried in a bill, wherever it might be, they let us know if it's going to impact Dare County. And it's something that we couldn't possibly do to keep up with all that. And they do that for us, they evaluate it, and they tell us when it's happening, and then we can bring it to you all to decide how or if we want to react to it. So they provide some great service that we can't otherwise get, and so it's there for you to approve. Again, the terms and the conditions of the contract are the same. They've been that way since the inception. They haven't raised their prices or changed, and so we've got a...
Yeah, my hat's off to them for that fee. It's not changed one bit since we took them on a number of years ago.
Is this, is this something that you don't do, and just trying to figure this out? We don't put RFQ out for like...
We did that when we hired them initially.
Okay.
And they were, at that time, the number two or three rated lobbying firm in the state. We've got relationships with them, we're pleased with them, and so we haven't put it back out since.
Okay, so they've just, we've been doing this for several years?
Yes.
I checked them out online, and my only concern is they have, they don't have a whole lot of experience with fishing. How have they been helping us with fishing in the past?
They've been actually very good with fishing.
They've been very good.
Okay.
Very good.
Okay. I'll take your word on that. I was just, when I was looking at them, I'm like, I don't see any fishing stuff here.
So they may or may not have had fishing clients, so, other than us.
Right.
But if you look at their staff, they're broad, they cover all the bases. They've got a strong Republican staff, they've got a strong Democrat staff, they've got connections through all those departments. They're close with the leadership, and so they've got a lot of, I don't want to say influence, but they've got a lot of access that can help, and that's what lobbyists do. That's, you're really looking for the access. They can learn, if we tell them we've got a fisheries issue, they can learn the fisheries issue, and they'll advocate for it. Whatever we tell them our position is on the fishery issue, they'll take that position and advocate that for us. And so they'll help us there if we have those issues come up.
Bobby, I do have a question regarding that. I believe that Ms. Balance would agree with me on this. Dare County is not currently represented in our Marine Fisheries Board. With a new governor being sworn in, he will have to appoint the Marine Fisheries Board. I don't know if there's any way we could talk to them and potentially trying to advocate for a Dare County representative on our Marine Fisheries Commission.
Sure.
Absolutely. We need to do that.
Yeah. All right.
Motion to approve the agreement.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross, it's been seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Item 16 is an electronic device policy to comply with GS 143-805. Back in the fall, the legislature adopted a statute that required every municipal government to adopt a policy such as the one before you, before January 1st. And so we've taken what they've put in the statute back in October, turned it into a policy, and that's before you for approval today. Really, we don't have a choice about this, the statute requires it, but it does require your approval.
I'll make a motion to approve the electronic device policy to comply with the new state statute.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Balance. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Burris. Any further discussion?
This is also, when they do this stuff, and they did it to the school boards quite a bit, where they put these deadlines on things, and so it is unnecessary, but I think it's a good policy. it, it is unnecessary, but I think it's a good policy. Um, I think it, I think it'll, it definitely makes a statement, and it's, and it's in the right place.
Alright, any further comments? Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Item seventeen is your consent agenda. I'm waiting for, there it is. Okay, on the consent agenda, we have the approval of the minutes for November the fourth, we have the tax collector's report, we have the spectrum fiber circuit, the budget amendment to close the COVID-nineteen fund, and a resolution and contract for investments safekeeping.
Motion to approve.
A motion on the floor by Vice Chairman House to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next are your board appointments. Uh, your first appointment is for the Aging Advisory Council for the Album Moral Commission. Sandy Pace at the Virginia Tillett Center has retired from Dare County, and we need to reappoint someone, or appoint someone. Uh, Larry, Laura Lewis has, was hired as the new Virginia Tillett Center manager and has expressed that she's willing to serve in this role.
I recommend Laura Lewis fill the vacancy created by our former director, Sandy Pace.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Ross to appoint Laura Lewis.
I second that.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Uh, next is the Board of Equalization Review. The board recommends that Nelson Skip Jones, Jonathan Waddell, Jeffrey Scott, Terry Gore, and Charles Evans all be reappointed.
Motion to reappoint.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor to reappoint all by Commissioner Bateman.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Uh, next is the Dare County Tourism Board. There's a number of representatives, I'm gonna go through these one at a time and let you all point them that way. First is the Dare County Chamber of Commerce, they have a seat. Uh, Richard Hess term has expired, and he's eligible for reappointment, uh, and the chamber recommends his reappointment.
I, I was confused for a minute. We were on the Tourism Board, then we got to the Chamber of Commerce.
The Chamber's seat.
Chamber's seat. He represents the Chamber's seat.
That's where I got confused, okay.
Motion to reappoint.
Motion on the floor to reappoint by Commissioner Bateman, seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Hotel Motel Association seat, and Tonya Cohen's term has expired, she's eligible for reappointment, and the Hotel Motel Association has recommended her reappointment.
Move to reappoint.
Motion on the floor by Vice Chairman House to reappoint, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Burrus. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Then for the Town of Duck seat, Monica Tibido's term has expired, she is not eligible for reappointment. Uh, the Duck Town Council has designated the following nominees in order of preference, you're to select one. Their top choice is Councilwoman Brenda Chason, thereafter is Councilman Kevin Lingard, and then Councilman Sanford Whitman.
Motion to appoint Brenda Chason.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chair, House, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Town of Southern Shore seat. Mark Batnick's term has expired, he's eligible for reappointment, and the town council has recommended his reappointment.
Move to reappoint, Mark.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman House, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Burrus. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Town of Manio seat. Tocla Salt's term has expired, he's eligible for reappointment, and the town commissioners have recommended his reappointment.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Seconded. Seconded by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing those, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Hatteras at Large seat. Dennis Robinson's term has expired, he is eligible for reappointment, and we have no other applications on file.
I would make a motion to reappoint Dennis Robinson.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Balance, is there a second? Seconded by the Vice Chairman House. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Next is the Game and Wildlife Commission seat. Um, Kyle Perry has resigned from, I'm sorry, this is the Game and Wildlife Commission, this is not a Tourism Board seat.
Right.
Kyle Perry has resigned from the Game and Wildlife Commission, a new member will need to be appointed to fulfill his unexpired term.
I nominate Anthony Lloyd to fill that term.
I would like to, can I, I would like to request that I be recused. One of the applicants is a close family member.
Uh, the Commissioner Balance has asked to be recused, um, is there a motion to do so?
Some.
Okay, it's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman, seconded by
Second.
Com- Vice Chairman House. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Commissioner Balance.
Thank you. First time.
Alright, it's a motion on the floor for, uh, Justin Lloyd, uh, is there a second?
Anthony Lloyd.
I mean Anthony Lloyd, I don't know why I said Justin. Uh, it's seconded by Commissioner Bateman and I believe Burrus. Those in favor, those in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. You can bring Commissioner Balance back in.
Next is the Land Transfer Tax Appeals Board. Uh, James Ayers resigned in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, the Town of Manio recommends that Ruth Stetson be appointed to fulfill his unexpired term.
Pleasure of the board?
I'm trying to think.
Going once, going twice.
Yeah, I'll approve it, whatever.
It's a motion on the floor by Vice Chairman House.
Trying to catch up to it on here, so.
That's what I'm doing too.
It's seconded by Commissioner Burrus. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then you have the Special Motor Vehicle Valuation Review Board. The board recommends that, uh, Danny Couch, Doc Sawyer, and David Light all be reappointed.
Okay, is, is there a motion on the floor?
Move to reappoint.
Motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman House and Commissioner Bateman, it's been seconded by Commissioner Burrus. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then you have your upcoming Board and Committee appointments. In January, you have the Juvenile Crime Prevention Council with one term expiring. You have the Older Adult Services Advisory Council with one term expiring, and you have the Working Waterman Commission with two terms expiring. In February, you have the Aging Advisory Council with two terms expiring, the Planning Board with two terms expiring, and the Senior Tar Heel Legislator, Legislature Delegates with two terms expiring. And then in March, you have the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board with one term expiring, and the Working Waterman Commission with one term expiring. And with that, Mr. Chairman, that would be your, uh, agenda.
Alright, thank you, County Manager. Um, that brings us to item nineteen, Commissioners Business and County Attorney Manager's Business. Do you have anything else this morning?
Well, I'll do two things. Uh, one is at the appropriate time, we need a closed session to talk about a real estate matter and also a litigation matter.
Okay.
Uh, and then there was a question about, uh, the subpoenas that you all had gotten, and they wanted an answer, and there's not really an answer to that. There is no, we're not under any investigation or anything, and so there's no conclusion. They're not coming back to us. They've gotten the information they want from us, and they'll do whatever they do with it, and we're not involved. So they're not gonna come back and tell us what's going on, or confer with us further, or anything else like that. We're, we're just providing them what they've asked for, and they got it. That, that's all I can tell you about it, and haven't talked with them since, and.
Yeah, I was just gonna offer, I spoke with one of the special agents and had a slight conflict. I'm speaking to the gentleman, Hassan Public Comment, and I explained the slight conflict in November. He said, "Ah, that's fine, we'll just reschedule it for December, don't, don't change your plans." He was very nice, very cordial, so I just thought I'd give you that little insight to my interchange with him, and it was, it was quite friendly, quite fine. Okay.
And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, with respects to that, Vice Chairman, uh, House and myself have already met with them. That brings us to, um, Commissioners Business and Commissioner Ross, would you kick that off for us today? In fairness to, uh, Commissioner Balance, Burrus, and Creef, uh, this is a section, um, at the end of the meeting where if you've got anything on your mind that you'd like to discuss or bring up or look into. So, I'll, I'll call on Commissioner Ross first, so, and then Vice Chairman, and then Commissioner Bateman, then y'all will get a feel for what we, we do under that portion of the agenda.
Well, let me kick off with congratulations once again to those now joining our board, Carson and Mr. Burrus, and, uh, our chairman, Vice Chairman, and Ms. Balance. Uh, great to have you all here, we've got a new board. Erv, I feel like you and I were a little left out of the ceremony this morning, didn't get to go down and get sworn in or anything. So we kinda just stood up here and talked amongst ourselves. I just have a couple of things on the calendar for everyone. The Children and Youth Partnership is sponsoring two events. One on December the third, and, uh, that is gonna be at five thirty-four Ananias Drive in, in Manio. It is a child well-being, uh, session from two to three. I'm gonna plan to be there. Uh, I think this is important stuff. They've got a follow-up meeting on early childcare from ten to eleven thirty, same place in Manio, Ananias Dare, five thirty-four, on January fifteenth. Our kids and their well-being are important, guys, and these folks do a lot of work to bring awareness and focus to us, so if you can make it, these are very worthwhile events.
You said the fifteenth of January?
Fifteenth of January, ten to eleven thirty in Manio. Uh, and the focus there is childcare. The one on December third is more of child well-being, and that one is dealing with stress, anxiety, uh, substance abuse, a lot of the pressures that are affecting our kids in schools, and I'm looking at Mary Ellen next to me. Uh, the school board is very well aware. I, I noticed Superintendent Bassnight was here earlier, and, um, I know that that's a big concern and something they deal with every day. Good news, Elizabeth City State University is coming to town. They'll be at St. Andrews by the Sea. This is a big deal, uh, and they're doing a concert on December the eighth at four o'clock. If you have never been, you're missing it. It's really good. I was there last year.
Yeah, awesome.
I'm going again this year, and I would encourage your attendance. The price, wait for it, is free. This is a great event. St. Andrews by the Sea, December the eighth at four P M. Steve, I know this one strikes with you, on the, um, looking for it, seventeenth of December at nine A M, Wright Brothers Memorial, First Flight Society has a beautiful ceremony every year. Many of us have been there. Once again, December seventeenth at nine, I would urge everybody to be there. Special congratulations.
Hundred and what? Hundred and twenty-one?
Gosh.
Hundred and twenty-one?
Yeah, I think it is. Yes, it is, 'cause nineteen oh three, that was it. You're right, hundred and twenty-first. Uh, just want to extend again, you surprised me, Mr. Chairman, with the Longleaf Pine Award to Sheriff Doughty. Could not think of a more deserving individual, and I was so pleased to see it, and just want to again offer my congratulations for a most deserving candidate. Sheriff Doughty is simply one of the best. That's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chairman House.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, first off, I'd like to humbly thanks the, thank the citizens of Dare County for re-electing me for another term, uh, to serve on the board. Uh, I, I cannot express the, the gratitude and thanks, uh, to all of our citizens. And, uh, I am definitely humbled by the support of my fellow commissioners in, uh, electing me as the vice chair. Uh, I know I've got, uh, I've, I've got a, a, a very good reputation to live up to with, uh, Vice Chairman Overman leaving, and I will try my best to live up to, to those standards. Again, I'd like to also thank Sheriff Doug Doughty for, uh, not only being a good friend of mine, uh, ever since he moved here in Dare County, but also for his, uh, his award for the Longleaf Pine. But I, I also felt honored for him, uh, this morning to, to hold the Bible, uh, with me and, and, in my oath. And I, I can't tell you how deeply, uh, touched I am by, uh, Sheriff Doughty, and, uh, not only his, his well-being, uh, of himself as a very dear, dear and longtime friend, but also to the service that he provides for Dare County. Also, um, the Marine Fisheries Commission did have their meeting last month, um, and a few changes have, have been made. A former Chairman, uh, Bizette is no longer on the commission. Sammy Corbett is now the chair, again, he represents commercial fishing. And Sarah Gardner, who is a commissioner at large, was, uh, elected as vice chair. And, uh, Will Service has been appointed as a recreational fisherman to the, to the board. And, um, so we got some changes happening there, uh, with, with that, and yes, we have reached out, I have reached out to, uh, Josh Stein's office on several occasions, uh, to try to get some type of advocacy for Dare County. Unfortunately, I have been met with a brick wall and not being able to get through to him or his staff. Both, uh, I've, I've contacted with her on three different occasions, and nothing.
Everybody get that?
Should not surprise you.
Okay.
The, uh, also the Commissioner, uh, the Marine Fisheries Commission, uh, the Marine Fisheries Commission does have, uh, the power to nominate to the governor who they would like to have on the Atlantic Fisheries, uh, which is a federal, uh, board, but the governor appoints the North Carolina representative to, to that. I will be pleased to announce, they've now, they nominated three people, uh, to be sent to the governor. The third one, I can't quite remember his name, but he is in northeastern North Carolina, but not here in Dare County. However, we do have two Dare County, uh, people that were, were nominated, and that was Alana Harris, uh, from Hatteras, and also Demi Hemmerite, uh, also from, uh, here in, uh, Dare County. So those three people were nom, were nominated by the Marine Fisheries and sent to the governor, and, uh, of course, it's up to the governor to appoint whoever he wants to, but the Marine Fisheries advising to put one of these three people on there, so, uh, I wanted to give you an update on that. Also, uh, Director Rawls also gave an update on the beginning work of Amendment Four to the Southern Flounder Fishery Management Plan. And the plan is to shift, what they're looking for is to shift the, um, recreational commercial, uh, allocation to a fifty-fifty for the season of twenty twenty-five, and that's one year earlier as outlined by the Amendment Three. They also, uh, did a, uh, Marine Fisheries, uh, chose the preferred management plan for the speckled trout, which, uh, has different slot sizes and different openings, uh, or closures throughout the year. And, so, I, I would definitely recommend you to look over that if you're gonna go, uh, speckled trout fishing, look them up, uh, and, uh, and make sure we're doing, doing everything right. Also, uh, we've had a lot of information on the right whales. As you know, they're trying to do a, a speed limit, if you will, uh, coming in. But right this time of the year, it is, uh, right whale migration, uh, south, and we'll be passing by the North Carolina coast in the next month or so. If you do see a right, a white ri, right whale, uh, report your sightings, uh, to one eight.
Don't try and stop them.
Yeah, don't try and stop them.
Let them go.
Yeah. And if you do, uh, definitely get on the website, uh, or, uh, you can report your sightings to one eight seven seven nine four two five three four three. Try to get photos and video if you can so that they can, uh, take, uh, a better look at it. And also, if you do call that number, and if you get a voicemail, leave a voicemail. And, uh, also for our favorite part of any commissioner's meeting, our SPCA Pet of the Week.
Our Pet of the Week this week is Ava. Ava is a six-year-old domestic shorthair. She is a sweet and laid-back feline. This cat has a gentle, easygoing nature and gets along wonderfully with other cats. When she's not cuddling up for a nap, she can be found contently watching birds from the window. To adopt Ava or foster one of our other animals, come visit us Monday through Friday at our shelter located in Manio. For more information, visit our at our shelter located in Manio. For more information, visit our website at obxspca.org or visit our OBX SPCA Facebook page.
So be sure to head down to SPCA and check out Ava and all the other animals they have down there, and hopefully you can give them one of their forever homes. Also, I skipped over a note. I wanted to give you an update on Ms. Katie, our dredge. She has been operating flawlessly. They've had zero violations. Also, we just found out that the Army Corps, in our last commissioner's meeting, I told you, Army Corps was looking at possibly doing a pipeline project in the alternate route. So we were actually designed, told not to go into that route. Now they've come back and said they're not doing that pipeline route. So now we've changed our plans again and started making plans to go into the alternate route so we can keep the boats coming into inlet and all the way into our ways, our waterways inland. So just want to pass that along. It's one of those, don't do it, don't do it, we're not going to do it, you do it. So it's one of those things again.
We love the Corps, Steve.
Ah, trust me. So I just want to give you an update on that. So we're switching gears on that. And with that, I wish everybody in Dare County a very happy, safe Christmas season. And if sometime around December 24th you see a sleigh riding around here with reindeer, please get out of his way. He's got a busy schedule, because we've had a lot of great kids this year, and I'm sure he's going to look out for all of them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bateman?
Yes, sir. Yeah, congratulations to Doug. That's really, that's fantastic. He's very deserving, great asset to our community. Gosh, he's just a super-nice guy, does a great job. Congratulations to the new board members. I look forward to working with everybody. Congratulations, Steve, on your vice chairmanship, and Eric Fearless Leader, Bob Woodard, you've done an excellent job. You're definitely a Dare County 100%, 24 hours a day. And I appreciate all you do.
Thank you.
Bobby, for the last eight months, I've been talking to you about the boat ramp in Juancheez, and I got a big picture from Shannon, said it had a big sign down there, and it's looking good. Thank you. I appreciate it. They need that down there. They really do. So thank you for all their, sorry to be a hassle about it, but I know I ask you every meeting.
Too many folks to jump through to get to where we needed to be.
Yeah, but we're done there. And the soccer fields, I had a few minutes, and I started riding through the soccer fields, and they're looking really, really good. And I'm very pleased with what we're doing there. We had some folks hit this weekend right in front of Sam and Amy's, the crosswalk there. I noticed that Kitty Hawk applied for, I think it was $40,000 for some lights there. I don't know what we have down south in unincorporated Dare, but I will tell you, this is what I've found. I take the beach road home every night. And you have a car coming at you, the lights are in your eyes, and you have people that are crossing the roads. And guys, the unfortunate thing about these people, they think they have the right to cross the road without looking. I've had to put my brakes on many, many times, and they're startled because of the fact that I didn't stop, or wasn't, you know, I hadn't seen them, you know? And I don't want to hit anybody. So I don't know what, how we got to the point that we're encouraged in to cross roads without looking, but whatever we can do in unincorporated Dare to bring awareness to that, whether it's through websites or whatever we can do. I know in Kitty Hawk, we spent $8,000 on a flashing light. And you got to the, right there, Black Pelican, cut to the foot across the road, you push a button, and the light flashes when you want to cross, and it alerts the driver. They're $8,000 apiece. There's a lot of crosswalks. I don't see that as being a variable thing, but I do see the lighted areas with these lights that come on and go off. And some of those even flash. The one on the Woods Road, you go up, and as soon as you hit the bottom of it, it flashes. And the person that's driving down the road can see that as well as the person that's crossing the road. In a way, we can do to save lives. It'd be a great thing. Crosswalks. Over the last two years, the Saving Lives Task Force, as well as other agencies within North Carolina, have lobbied our legislators, the Senate and the House both, to try to curb the sale of a product called Kratom, Phenibut, and also Tenaptine, which is a, under the, is being marketed as a dietary supplement. So you can go into the grocery store, and you can buy this product. It's known as grocery store heroin. It is not good for you. There is people who are overdosing on it. The average addict walks around, and I'm one of them. You know, when you're out there doing drugs and you're drinking and out there, it says, take two pills, you know, how many milligrams twice a day. Well, a good addict's going to take 10, because if two pills make you feel good, 10's going to make you feel really, really good. And they're going into convulsions. They're having strokes, all kinds of negative activity on this. So we lobbied those folks. They had a bill called Bill 250. It went into the Senate. The Senate said, great. It got to the House. It got put in, when it left the Senate into another bill with marijuana, to legalize marijuana, and naturally, it failed. I would like this board to come up with a resolution to send to the House and to the Senate both, as well as to every other municipality, and as well as every other county in North Carolina, stating that we would like that bill to be a standalone bill and to ban the sale of those things in not only Dare County, but North Carolina. In our recovery court, we have people that are using Kratom to kick heroin. The last session, we had four or five people who tested positive for it. We've never seen that before. So it's growing in momentum. I had an individual, which I had to let go from one of my businesses, that was in there, and she was foaming from the mouth. I mean, it's just not a good drug, y'all.
Erv, how in the world does that get approved across the counter?
See, that's where I'm at, too.
It blows my mind.
I can't figure that out.
It's not regulated by the FDA, and because it's a dietary supplement, they do not have to put all the ingredients that goes into the product itself. In January of last year, the FDA came out and said, do not, to pull it off the shelves. Well, they pulled that off the shelves, and they re-leased it again in a product called Neptune Fix Xavier, which is a totally different product by name, but it's the same thing as they were selling before, that the FDA said, please do not take this.
What is the drug we're trying to get removed?
Kratom?
Kratom, and T-I-A-N-A-P-T-I-N-E.
Whoa, 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 one more time?
Again, T-R-I.
It's Trinapkin, which is T-I-A-N-A-P-T-I-N-E. And the other is Kratom, K-R-A-T-O-M. And the other one is Phenibut, P-H-E-N-I-B-U-T.
Now, I think they're all the same active ingredients, just different manufacturers for different names.
No, but Kratom's a plant that's been around for centuries. The Chinese used it.
Okay.
Okay. The Tenaptine, that stuff came out in 1960 by the French as an anxiety drug. And but what these guys do, they change the composite of the drug itself to make it more intensity on the thing that makes you high, and makes it, it's really bad.
Well, this is nothing, this, when you can pass something across the counter like that, this won't do anything but increase the number of addicts, for God's sake.
Exactly.
Because you're always looking for something different to get you high, especially when it's legal. And you come in recovery court, we, until two, until about six months ago, we did not check for Kratom in recovery court. Now we check, and I believe there was like five or six the last court we had that tested positive for it.
Commissioner Bateman, was there a bill passed that eliminated some of these, or did they all get tied up in that?
It all got tied up in the marijuana bill.
So none of them got done?
Yeah. Now, I spoke with Representative Kidwell. Of course, one blames it on the other place, and the other one blames it on the other. He said, as long as it's stuck with the marijuana bill, it's not going to get passed in the House. When I talked to Senator Haney, I talked to him yesterday.
I talked to our lobbyists when you called me a while back.
Yeah, when I talked to Bobby yesterday, Bobby said, listen, said, if it's standalone, I can have a better chance of getting it through.
So that's what we want to advocate in a resolution is a standalone.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I'm happy to sign that when staff drafts it.
We'll get that together and get it out.
Do we need a motion to come back for me to sign, or do you give me the authority to sign that resolution?
I give you the authority to sign the resolution.
A motion to allow you to adopt a resolution in that effect and authorize you to sign it?
Right, right.
And I guess if we need some resolution language, Roxanna?
I'll get with her. I'll get Dorothy to get with her.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
That resolution language, I think, should include the effects on our school kids, especially after what, you know, putting these new counselors that we're housing in our schools. I think that some of that language in the resolution should include the effect on our students.
Oh, definitely. I think you all, you just have to be, I don't know if you have to be 18 to buy it or not.
If it's in the grocery store, you probably don't.
Yeah.
But then it stops people even under 18?
No.
Yeah.
It's readily available.
Right.
And that's, um...
Do we need a motion or second?
Yeah, we do. Do you want to make that motion?
I'm making that motion.
I'll second it.
Second about Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion then? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carries unanimously. Anything else? Okay, thank you. Commissioner Balance?
I'll be brief, shockingly.
Is this a trend, or is this like a one-time thing?
This is a one-time thing. This is your Christmas present. Congratulations to all of you and our new school board as well. I look forward, and always here for you if you need, have questions or if anything I can do. Congratulations to you, Brian. You will do a wonderful job, as you did with the Boston Civic Association. Very proud of what you guys have accomplished down there. The Amendment 3 that Steve was discussing, it's not, I'm actually a little excited about this Amendment 4, because I think it gives us a chance to fight against 3 again, because it's not legal. And so I would love to talk with the McGuire Woods Group about how we can lobby or do something to try to put the brakes on this, because to, the 50% given to recreational, and to be clear, commercial fishermen do not want recreational fishermen to not be able to catch a fish. It is not us against them, and it's always been that stigma, and I hate that. I think that the regulations they've put on the recreational are just as detrimental to our tackle shops and everybody else. I would like to see, but there's no accurate way for recreational fishermen to report their catch. They're not reporting their catch. But every single fish that comes to the dock off of a commercial boat gets recorded. So we get beat up on it all the time because of the reporting that we have to do when we bring fish to the dock. So I look forward to working with you, Steve, on that. I am super excited on a more broad scale to work with each of you. I look forward to your leadership, Bob and Steve. I'm going to be picking this guy's brain about budgets before I go see Mr. Clausen down there.
Oh, joy.
But I am super excited about what's to come in the new year, about what this board can accomplish. There's so much good that's happening in Dare County right now, and I am excited to be a part of it. So I hope everybody has a wonderful, safe Christmas. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. There's so much to be grateful for. So, and one more thing, I want to thank my husband and my son. See, I'm going to get teary-eyed. But like Bob said, when you put yourself out there, it's tough on the whole family. And he has been nothing but supportive. I know you guys don't see him very often, and you know, he shot out of here right away, because he doesn't sit still well. I mean, we really got him to sit for 20 minutes. It was, you know. But I couldn't do the things I do for my community, for my family, for my friends, for my business, if I didn't have his support, and I'm very grateful. So Merry Christmas.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burris?
I would like to start by also congratulating everyone, especially here, the folks I'm going to be working with on the Board of Commissioners, the school board. We have a great new group coming in there. It's going to be exciting to work with them on things that they need to help the youth in our community. I would also like to take a moment and acknowledge the people that sat in this chair before me, and that's Commissioner Tobin, who is no longer with us, and by all accounts, a wonderful human being. I haven't heard anybody say a negative word about him. And then, you know, Commissioner Bassnight, who I've known since I was a little kid. She taught me fifth grade and is a wonderful human being and has a lifetime of service to our community as a school teacher with the Board of Ed and with the Board of Commissioners. And I would like to point out both of them and their service to our community and thank them. And it's a, it's tough shoes to fill, and I don't, I don't think about it as filling the shoes. I think about it as trying to do the best job I can to keep up with their legacy and what they have done for us. So I just wanted to point that out. And Commissioner Overman, Vice Chairman, and his years of service, and thank him for that. Also, Sheriff Doughty, a wonderful honor to be recognized. I think everybody would like to be recognized at the end of your career for the work you've done, and it's a very nice honor, very deserving for him. So I would like to point those things out, and then just say that I, I'm very excited about the opportunity to get up here and work on behalf of the community and the folks in it, because we have a wonderful county, and we have some wonderful people here. There is no shortage of a sense of community, of caring, of giving. We have a lot of wonderful programs in the works. We'll be doing more, I'm sure. The work with the addicts, with the recovery centers and recovery programs. I mean, it's fantastic, the things we've been doing. So just to keep on that same highway is going to be a real pleasure to work with everybody in doing that. And then, like Commissioner Balance, I'd just like to thank my family, because I come from a large group, and without them, I wouldn't be where I am today. And I'd like to thank my family, my four siblings and my mother, and just, and point out what a positive influence they've been on, on making me who I am today. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Creve?
First and foremost, the first thing I would like to say is I also would like to congratulate Wally Overman on his career and excellent service to our county. He's a fantastic human being. He's still going to be serving in a lot of roles across the county, and I'd just like to wish him the best. My second thing is for Sheriff Doug Doughty, we have an excellent sheriff's department here in Dare County. Exceptional in the fact that we have so much tourism here, and they keep our violent crime rates low, and they keep our streets safe. He is well-deserving of this award, and it's an honor for him to be our sheriff. I know there was, he said he was going to retire, and now he's coming back, so we're happy to have him to fill out the rest of his turn, and it's really an honor. Thirdly, I would like to thank everybody on this board for a seamless transition into my seat here. Y'all have been extremely helpful every step of the way, emailing me stuff. I know Bob's been emailing me every month since I won my primary, and I just want to thank you so much. And thanks for the cookies, Steve. They look excellent. I'd also like to say congratulations to our superintendent, and I know this is a big step in the right direction for him, getting this Early College going. He came to my place of business specifically to talk with me for a couple hours a few months ago about it, and he sold me on the Early College. So I know we're all looking forward to that. Anthony, Ben, I met you during the primary process, but now that you're going to be on our Duckbind Board, I'll be seeing you a lot more. I'll be in all those meetings. My father's a 48-year deer guide and manager of a gun club down here. So if you need help meeting any of those people, Bo Meekins or anybody, I can get you rigged up. And I did prepare a statement for today. Dare County is filled with dreamers. I've had the pleasure of meeting some of the most caring, intelligent, and exceptional people here in Dare County. Some would say it's possibly destiny. Many of our bloodlines trace back to some of the first settlers in America, who crossed an ocean with nothing but an American dream. They endured hardships, established a future they couldn't have imagined. I also have a dream, a resident of Dare County. I want to see our children learn to walk and talk and grow right here, experience the same loving community that I was so blessed to receive. I want to see them educated by the best teachers in the world, fall in love, get married, and start their lives and businesses in Dare County where they belong. and start their lives and businesses in Dare County where they belong. And when I'm old and gray reflecting on days gone by, whether I'm watching the black ducks fly over gray morning or watching our wine cheese-built boats cut through the inlet like Moses, I will hold my head high knowing that in my time of service to our beloved county, I did everything that I could to preserve, serve and protect our community. I will be fiscally responsible, kind and will fight for you with unwavering confidence and growing resolve. God bless your families, safe travels during this holiday season and I want to wish everybody a Merry Christmas and thank you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner Will Sid. Just a final comment. I know several of you were surprised about the long leaf fan with Doug and I was told that in the beginning, when we reached out to get this done, to please do not tell anyone. So that included even my fellow board members, which I do not hold back anything from any of my fellow board members, but I was asked to please keep this private. And so I apologize to you guys for not sharing that with you, but I was honoring what I was asked to do. I was asked just to be one of the letter writers. It takes about three letters and a huge endorsement from either a legislator or whatever to make this happen. So that's why I didn't say anything to any of you guys. So wasn't trying to hold back from you, I just was honoring my pledge to that support. And I, first and foremost, thank you for your confidence in me to lead this board another year. It's an honor for me to do that and it means a lot to me that I have your support. I don't know about Steve or Urban or Rob, but I'm excited about this new board and the attitude with our new board members. I'm, I'm really excited just listening to them this morning, their engagement. I think we're going to really gel as a group and I couldn't be more pleased to have you new members on this board with us. And as I said in the beginning, we as a society must start to look past our differences in beginning, honestly, open work towards focusing our differences and stressing and focusing on our commonalities. And I'm hoping and praying that some of these news medias out here will follow what this board does and those that didn't vote for us will at least try to look past the differences and work with us to try to focus on those commonalities together. Because it's, each and every one of us step up to the plate every single day and we're trying to do what's in the best interest of our county and we could not do it, as most of y'all had said this morning, that you couldn't do it without the support of your family. And trust me, I know how many hours it takes and that's hard on the family and it's hard on our loved ones. And for you to have their support, that is second to none. And I look forward to our time together and look forward to making some good things continue to happen in Dare County. So God bless you and God bless this county. God bless our citizens. God bless the United States of America. God bless our veterans. And I hope that each and every one of you that are listening to this today and that will follow us later on, I hope you had a very happy Thanksgiving and most importantly, a very merry Christmas and celebrate the life of our Savior. Bobby?
Mr. Chairman, I need a motion pursuant to NCGS 143 through 1811A5 to instruct the county staff or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by on behalf of the county in the negotiating price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property in the matter of the Avon Pier property and then under the provisions of NCGS 143, 31811A3 to consult with the attorney employed retained by the county in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege.
So moved. Does the motion by the Vice Chair is a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Before we adjourn, let me just ask if you had anything else on your agenda, Bobby? Our public information officer, Ms. Hessler, do you have anything for us today?
I also want to welcome the commissioners. I'm excited about the board, as you expressed, and it's time to update the website, so we'll be doing that today. We've gotten photos of our new commissioners. We'll get a group photo of you all before you leave today.
Okay.
Casey's here in the audience, ready to do that.
We do that right after closed session and close the meeting? Okay.
That'd be great. And then the only other thing I wanted to mention, Hosee was here talking about revaluation becoming effective in, on January 1st. So y'all are going to get questions. The public has a lot of questions. We've worked closely with them to develop webpages. You find that at darenc.gov/revaluation. It goes through the process, the timeline, there's frequently asked questions, there's really everything anyone would want to know about how that works. So I wanted to make sure that I let you all know about that so that you can look at it yourselves, learn more and also refer other people to it. And that's, I think that's all I have.
Chairman, just one thing to add in that vein. As we work through from now until we adopt a budget, there are some specific time intervals where Hosee will come back to you about revalue. There's some things he's got to tell you, there's some revenue neutral rates, things that have to be published, there's some other steps that he has to take before that all becomes final. So while we've got all that on there, there'll be also some opportunities publicly to publicize, you know, the things that are going on with revalue as well.
Okay, thank you, Bobby.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Dorothy. Our finance director, Mr. Clausen, you have anything for us?
This one, we turned the audit report into the State Treasurer's Office last Monday.
Oh, okay.
We're having an audit committee meeting on the 18th and we'll start, it's posted on the website and we'll start your presentation toward your, the January meeting.
And what a huge, huge successes for us with your, with your staff. Dave, let them know, three, three, uh, three...
Double A plus.
Three, pardon?
Double A plus.
Three double A pluses from our, that's a first. That's a first.
I think the US government is two double As. I think we're ahead of them. Just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, that's fantastic. Anything else, Dave?
No, sir.
Didn't have hurricanes, we'd be three.
Yeah, one more item before we break. There are a number of boards that Vice Chairman Overman sat on, Commissioner Bassnight sat on, and Commissioner Couch sat on. I will, I will be sending each one of you an email with some suggestions for boards that you serve on and I'm trying to fit a round peg in a round hole, but if there's any that I send you that you're not comfortable with or willing to work on, we, this is just a preliminary from me to send out and get a list that we can get started on replacing the new board members on those boards that they sat on. Give you an example is Commissioner Bateman sits on the Airport Authority as an at-large and Commissioner, Vice Chairman Overman was a board appointee. I'd like to flip that, that gives you an example. I'd like to, net, he's no longer here, I'd like to keep Mr. Overton on that board as the at-large member and move Urban to the representative of the board to the Airport Authority. And we have several of those going on that I'd like to do and I'll send that list to you guys so we can maybe move on that in January. Okay? That's all I have. We'll break for recess. Matt?
Close session.
Close session. I'll call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and turn it over to the county manager.
Sir, Mr. Chairman, in the closed session, the board approved the minutes of the last closed session. I instructed the county staff on, with regard to a real estate matter and gave the attorney, the county attorney instructions with regard to a litigation matter in the PIF lawsuits. That took no other action.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to, to the end of our meeting, adjourn. I need a motion to adjourn until January, what's the date on January?
Just approved.
Six.
I don't have it in front of me. January 6, 2025.
So moved.
Okay, is a motion on the floor by Commissioner, Vice Chairman House, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Balance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you.